The red light's on, so.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, everyone, to this special meeting of the Cable Television Advisory Board. This is going to be our public hearing regarding the Comcast franchise renewal agreement. There is a Zoom link on the website for those that are joining us through that. Means there's also a telephone number that's also available on the notice. We do have members of the public present, so we'll be hearing from them in person. And, all right. Just in the process of calling things to order, I do want to go over a few things as far as kind of the purpose of tonight's hearing. Basically, we are looking for feedback from the public as far as Comcast's execution of the current agreement, whether they've met the service expectations that members of the city have, whether the current agreement has met the needs of the people in the city. There are several things that we can't affect through the franchise agreement process. Probably the most likely to be controversial of those would be pricing. We don't have any say over Comcast pricing. We do not have any influence over cable, the channels that they're carrying on the cable, and we have no influence over their internet offerings. So with those fairly significant exceptions to what we're talking about, we are looking for the public to offer feedback as far as how things have gone in the preceding seven years. And the way that things will go, we'll hear from someone that's in favor of renewing the agreement or, and I realize that there's a little bit of latitude here since we're looking primarily at facts as opposed to necessarily testimony, and then hear from someone in opposition and back and forth while we have people in both. Alderman Jettie?
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that we take attendance and establish that we have a quorum?
Yes, since we went to great lengths to do that. Although that is on the agenda after the pledge of allegiance, so perhaps we can go with that first. Mr. Maitorich, would you like to lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One other thing before roll call is that I heard this morning that former Mayor Streeter passed away, so I would ask that we have a moment of silence for him. All right. And we'll begin with roll call. Andrew Sonoita is here. Justin Chapman is not here. Lauren Byer?
Here.
Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Kimberly Kleiner?
Here.
Cheryl Linder?
Here.
Jennifer McCormick is not here. We have a representative from the police department specially appointed for tonight, Mr. Pete Johnson?
Here.
Nick Maitorich?
Here.
Cole Morgan is not here. Chief Brian Rhodes?
Here.
All right, and it's the ruling of the chair that we have a quorum. All right, so we'll begin. I ask members of the public to please state their name and address when they come up to the microphone. Given everyone wearing masks, I'm not necessarily certain that I recognize you, so I ask you to do that. And as I say, we'll try to alternate between people that are loosely in favor of renewal and those opposed. If there are no people on either side, we'll go to the next person on the side that is represented. So if folks would like to come to the microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott McCullough, and I agree with the contract because we need Access Nashville. They have changed my life in many ways. They gave me opportunities. They gave me opportunities like Dick Gagnon and Pete and Chris Von Der Lippi, who absolutely they absolutely let me have our show called Special Talk, and we've had it on air for seven years, and I love Access Nashville. We need Access Nashville around. My name is Scott McCullough. I live at 49 Congress Street, apartment six. Sorry, I forgot to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would someone else like to come up? Do we have anyone that's opposing renewal of the Comcast franchise? All right, if not, the next person that's in favor of it?
Hi, my name is Ken Gidge. I'm from Ward Six here in Ashwa. Bernie Streeter, oh, I think it was probably 10 years ago, wanted one more channel from the cable company for public access. So that meeting got very contentious right here in this room to the point where they turned the camera to the ceiling and they turned off the sound. Quite a large argument. Finally, it was then Steve Bolton said, wait a minute, we heard that nobody went to any of these meetings wanting a public access TV. And I said, excuse me, I was at two of them. So that night, you didn't sign a contract with the cable company. Three or four days later, I find out that the cable company was very happy to give us one more channel. It took probably five or six years, we did have the channel, five or six years under Donna Lee Lozlo before it became public access. On the very first show of public access, live in studio, Bernie Streeter, Mr. Gagnon, the manager of the station then and now, and myself, we sat down and talked about public access, the importance of public access, what it can give the community a voice. And as we get closer to building and finishing this art complex, public access is really going to be important. Now, I've told you the story about Bernie Streeter because it's important. I think it's important that people realize here in this room and over TV that this is just one more good thing that he has done. Thank you.
Thank you. Though at the risk of dating myself, I think it was more like 17 years than 10 years ago, but I've all taken. All right, anyone else like to speak?
Yes, Lori Ordolano?
All right, so Ms. Ordolano, you're joining us by Zoom, I see.
I am, thank you. And I just dialed in, so I'm late to the party, but, and I'm not certain, I know this is a hearing on access and the contract, but, so I'm not certain if what I'm going to say fits in here, but public TV or the government channel used to play the board meetings, all different board meetings at various times, and there was a menu that was on the screen so that primarily our senior citizens could watch the government channel and see the meetings and what was going on. And it seems that we have stopped doing that, and we don't advertise the guide anymore, and we play the meetings much less. Is this something that is caused by the arrangement of contract or something that is happening with the city? And I'm only addressing it because when I campaigned in door-to-door knock, there were a number of seniors who mentioned that they could no longer really watch the meetings on TV because they just weren't repeated or played with any frequency, nor could they find them.
I, well, A, that would not be something that would be governed by the Comcast contract. Basically, how we run the government education and public access channels is up to the city and as far as the public, the contractor that we hired to do that. Mr. Painter is shaking his head as far as, my understanding is that as far as the frequency of playbacks, that's, we fill the time slots that we have. The issue is that there have been a lot more of the meetings that have been televised since COVID's happened rather than ones that used to not be televised. So because there were more meetings, there are fewer time slots for replays. Mr. Painter?
Yeah, I mean, we, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Painter. Yeah, no, we schedule replays during the day, all day. Now, of course, during the week, we've had meetings almost every night, so those are live, and so there isn't replays, you know, on the nights of the meetings. But our schedule, as far as I know, is on the website, you know, that all the replays. I mean, if you go back on this last weekend, all day long, all the meetings from last week were replayed each day.
All right, well, I would encourage anyone that's having trouble with getting the schedule or anything as far as replays to please contact us because it should be there.
I will look into that, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
I believe this is Pete Johnson. I believe too that is something we could ask for in the contract is to get on the electronic program guide so that the programs were listed in there on the TV itself, so.
That's certainly something we'll look at. All right, is there anyone else that would, from the public, who would like to testify with regard to the contract?
Yes, I would like to.
Oh, Ms. Hines. Stacy Hines is joining us by Zoom. Please proceed.
Yes, I am. My name is Stacy Hines, and I am Director of Communications for the Nashua School District at 141 Lake Street here in Nashua. And I actually chair the Education Channel Committee for the City of Nashua. And so I am submitting a letter signed by me representing the members on the Education Channel Committee. And if you don't mind, I'd like to just read the contents of the letter.
Please.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Dear Andrew, thank you for facilitating the public hearing of the Comcast franchise renewal of the City of Nashua Education Channel Committee. I write to encourage continued adequate support for Nashua ETV. Nashua ETV is a valuable resource for Nashua residents, starting with its beginning in January 2007, to its formal launch in February 2009, to its launch of live streaming in March 2011, to its present-day role as a reliable media conduit. Currently, Nashua ETV is available to Nashua residents in standard definition via Comcast Channel 99 and via the internet and high definition via 24/7 livestream. In 2017, we began offering the channel in HD to viewers anywhere with a smart TV with access to Roku or Apple TV. This allows alumni and extended family and friends living in other areas the ability to watch programming such as live sports, graduations, and other special events as they are happening. Nashua ETV is also a showcase for what student learning and education is all about in Nashua. Since the last franchise renewal in 2015, Nashua ETV has provided live coverage for nearly 750 events, meetings, and nearly 25,000 hours of local programming. During the height of the pandemic, Nashua ETV became an indispensable way of disseminating information to residents. As was common practice across the country, school board meetings shifted to remote and home attendance via video teleconferencing software. Nashua ETV pivoted to bring not only live meeting coverage, but also a much larger number of scholastic sporting events live to eager fans who are unable to attend the games due to the pandemic. We continue to work regularly with education organizations, including here in Nashua, including the Nashua Historical Society, Nashua Public Library, the Nashua Technology Center of the Nashua School District, the Nashua School District Schools, Nashua Board of Education, the Joint Special School Building Committee, Bishop Gerton High School, St. Christopher Academy, Nashua Police Department, Project Search, Nashua Senior Activity Center, Arlington Street Community Center, Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter, and the Greater Nashua Chamber of Commerce. Under the current franchise agreement, the city uses 1.3% of cable television franchise fees to support PEG programming on the public access, education, and government channels. Nashua ETV has been operating on flat funding but needs to adhere to its mission of broadcasting authentic content and to adapt without negative impact from industry fluctuations with the growth of unfettered internet-based options for broadcast. We want to be sure Nashua ETV remains viable, solvent, and independent of city operating funds. Toward that end, we encourage a franchise agreement that maximizes the 5% of fees allowable under FCC rules and regular capital improvement funding to develop further the community television system in Nashua to serve our residents. If I or any of my fellow members of the Nashua Channel Committee can be of help to you as you work through the renewal of the Comcast franchise agreement, please do not hesitate to contact. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I have actually sent a copy of the signed letter to Donna Graham, but if I should be sending it elsewhere to you, Andrew, just let me know.
That should be fine. I'm sure we'll get circulated to the members of the board.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone that's in opposition to the renewal? Or critical of Comcast? All right, if not, is there someone else that's in support of renewal?
Mr. Chair, if I may speak?
Oh, please identify yourself and.
Absolutely. My name is Owen Kerventure. I proudly serve as the president for the New Hampshire Coalition for Community Media. Greetings from Derry, New Hampshire. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you here today, Mr. Chair, and committee members, and also members of the public in attendance and viewing on TV. I am here, the New Hampshire Coalition for Community Media is a volunteer nonprofit-based organization, and our goal is to ensure the future vitality of New Hampshire based community centers by providing educational workshops, monitoring media trends, utilizing technology to inform and enhance community media centers in New Hampshire, and also to advocate for our colleagues throughout the state, and that's what I'm here to do. I will keep my comments very short at this time. Primarily, I'd like you to understand everyone in attendance and who may view later on that we are here as a resource. I certainly am here at president@nhccm.org. As you work through the process of renegotiation, anything that I personally cannot help you with, I will strive to seek throughout our network and the powerful coalition that we have throughout the state to get you the answers and empower you with the information you need as you work through this. Secondarily, I'd like to just state that no time else other than through a pandemic crisis has the services of media centers throughout New Hampshire been more evident, whether it be ensuring access to government meetings, which we know are of value, as mentioned by previous commentators, allowing the opportunity even through the crisis of finding ways to remotely produce shows for independent producers so that members of the community do have a voice and are able to share that with the community. Not only school board meetings, but I'm sure as many other communities all across the state, school spirit parades are allowed to be, you know, captured, all of these important events that create the fabric of a culture and a community. And I'm also here to tell you that you have a gem in Nashua with Access Nashville. The entire staff there, but primarily I'll mention Dick Gagnon and Pete Johnson. I consider them mentors. They're part of the founding members of our organization, and they are extremely dedicated, not only for you in the Gate City, but for empowering community media throughout the state. Every even national association meeting with the Alliance for Community Media and the regional, Pete is there every single time, and he can catch me up if I happen to miss a meeting. These are folks that are invested and love what they do and want to offer that to the community. This is a service that really needs full support and understanding and respecting the fact that this is a process that your community has to face. I don't want, and choices you have to make, I don't want to go into too many details regarding your particular contract. However, I will restate that I am here as a resource and also just give you a sense of the overall trends, what other communities around the state are doing when it comes to their time to renegotiate. And there are very few real areas. It's pretty standard now. There are a few key points that are open for negotiation. That would be the rate up to the maximum, as previously mentioned, per FCC of 5%. You also have the opportunity to negotiate for capital grants that typically are annualized over the term of the contract. And also what is trending now is our side letters in the agreement for HD channel over cable TV. I strongly encourage you to maximize and negotiate for the full 5%. There are a couple of reasons why. Primarily, we are seeing, it's no secret, it's out there, but in the market, there is a trend of cord cutters. This will help to compensate for that. And when we really think about it, if we think about, you know, for those watching perhaps who don't understand the funding model for PEG media, it is not taxpayer-funded. It is funded through franchise, these franchise fees which are up for negotiation. Any subscriber will see a franchise fee at the bottom of their monthly bill, such as I do, the Comcast bill. When we think of a rate increase of 1% of what that bill might be, we're talking a few dollars a year on average per subscriber. And like no other media center, because of their history, because of their experience, because of their situation, Nashua can turn those pennies, those few dollars, into exponentially more, turn those pennies into dollars. I will leave my comments at that. Again, primarily, I'd like you to know you can reach me at any time, president@nhccm. I thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. All right. Next up would be someone in opposition to renewal. Is there anyone? If not, is there another person in favor? Thank you for your patience.
My name is Chris Von Der Lippi, and I run a company on the water productions and have been affiliated with Access Nashville for a total of nine years. And I can tell you that it's a phenomenal experience because of the broad range of content that the station produces. I've been working with Scott McCullough for seven or eight years, and it's allowed him to really grow as an athlete, as a person. We've covered primarily sports, but everything from the Winter Games, skiing, snow shoeing up at Waterville Valley to the Penguin Plunge. The station has so many avenues for educational programming as well, like a lot of the programs that Ken Gidge has been involved in, The Art of Politics, and it's so, so important, and also growing with government meetings and things of that nature. And there's so many avenues to learn and learn about technical equipment and grow, not just for the Access Nashville staff, but for people who have independent companies like myself, as well as, you know, even creating fictional pieces for people who are creative and have independent pieces. I produced a TV show, Lessons. So I think the broad range of drama and educational content that Access Nashville has produced since 2012 and continues to, the bar continues to raise, and that's why I support the franchise agreement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I would ask, we've heard a lot of support for cable access and both government education and government access. I would ask that people touch on their experience with Comcast when they're talking. Just that is what we are trying to elicit comment on. The public in education and government access are all part of the contract in that those channels are part of the contract, and the funding is also part, because of the franchise fee. But in addition to ascertaining the value of those, we are looking for feedback as far as how Comcast has performed under the current contract, whether they've adequately serviced the community. So if folks could comment on that, that would be appreciated. Is there someone else that's opposed to Comcast being the franchise holder in the future? Seeing no one else at it, is there someone else in favor of it?
Thank you, everybody. That's all.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Jennings, and I'm the station manager for Bedford Community Television and WBNH LP 1051 FM radio, Bedford Radio. I've been involved in PEG access for 22 years, managing the station down there, with the station growing to where we now have four people and five Park Town people. I've negotiated for the town of Bedford three separate agreements. I've been involved in a number of different agreements, working with different towns, and it's always been with Comcast. I've seen changes, I've seen growth, I've seen them open up. Technology has changed, it's made life simple. Anytime there's an agreement, people will take a look at, okay, what can we do to get more? There's always that opportunity to get more. So all I can talk to you about right now, also being on the New Hampshire Coalition for Community Media, and I've been with them for over 20 minutes, is what we have experienced. I'll talk about the town of Bedford. In the early days of 2000, 2001, we were at 3%. When we did a five-year extension, we went to 4%. When we did our 10-year extension, we stayed at 4%. In 2018, we went to 5%. Now, why do we do 5%? Because we saw it as a potential defensive process to offset some of the decreases that we expected as people moved off of cable and went to OTT. And that has proven correct. But we see that change very minimally as we go from year to year, which we're only now down 2.3% because OTTs and cable have kind of met at a level where you can choose one way or the other, but you're getting basically equal services. What we've done is, unlike Nashua, and we're working with about a half a million dollars, is we set that rate at 5% because with the exception of this community and one others, everybody else was at 5%. The federal law allows us to go to 5%. Nobody walks away for money, and the impact is minimal. As Owen said, it's dollars. Somehow, people think they're being charged an awful lot of money to support the local community media center. Which is your best PR center for the town? We have four channels, three SD, but when they strain their HD, and we were one of the first ones in the entire Northeast to get an HD channel, which we got in our agreement. We also, and I was listening to the director of communications, we also as we also, as I said, stream in HD, but we also have, through Youku, you can actually have, download BCTV and you can have us right on your menu, right next to Netflix, Prime, et cetera. We believe in distributing media any way you can get it. There's no like, just watch cable. We do it on our Facebook page, we do it on our YouTube page. We distribute through our channels, which is one format. If there's any hiccup on the line, people that have community access usually don't have that problem, but we really don't. We have a lot of high speed at this time. This is technology moving forward. And the way we were able to do this is because of the money we get and we fully reinvest it. We have some talented people. And if nobody believes that public access was a valuable part of keeping communities together, and if you're looking to cut, you're going down the wrong path. But this is your community. We were, media in Massachusetts, public access here in New Hampshire. My own council, our school board, recognized that we went, potentially in some people's minds, from a wants to a need. We work very closely with public safety. They can override our channels and we paid for that infrastructure, emergency management operations, we're part of that plan. And the way we're able to do that is we have the money to set their infrastructure up and to have them automatically override our video, our channels. And we were able to start a low-power FM radio station. And by doing that, and that's an FCC-controlled radio station, we were able to set up a radio override. So when all things else fail during an emergency and everybody loses their power, falling back on that battery radio is pretty nifty. That's all made available through franchise fees. 5% helps us to stay in operation. 5% will help you to protect your asset. You know, as they say, if you build the road, you don't stop maintaining the road, right? You gotta take care of that road. If you spend millions on a road, you gotta pay hundreds of dollars to maybe make sure it's maintained. The same way with access. You're missing an additional 1%. You guys control it the way you want. We have our organization set up a little differently where all our money is controlled by us and we do not distribute it directly to the school district. We work with the school district. We have such a great bond with them. We pay for the infrastructure in the press box, in the theater, in the gym. We even have provided some funding for classroom. We take some of the students and we have them in the program doing some internships with us. So the school is very much part of our operation, it's not separate. But I, if you heard your director of communications from ATV, she nailed it. What they're doing and their end is exactly why you need to keep the money going. I manage public access, my assistant manager is here, also does that as well. I manage the educational channel, I manage the government channel, of course, we have the HD channel. We have it under one roof, under one control. So we have, like every other community in New Hampshire, with the exception of one, and that one community now, which is they had gone to 5%, we're all at 5%. And I would just recommend going to the 5% because once you enter that 10-year agreement, there's no going back. I have seen in the past, this one town, but they decided not to do it the second go-around, where they would do, after one year, they would say, let's say, have it set at 4%. All right, if we want to go to 4 or 5%, then this committee here could just send a letter to Comcast, say, we've reviewed this, our funding's going down, we'd like to bump that up to 4.5% and they'll honor that. Or you may want to go up to 5%. Our town, and most of them said, you know, we're going right to the top. Because they didn't want to be meeting and going through the delegation or doing through the analysis, et cetera. You have to ask yourself, what is the main concern about going to 5%? You just ask, the chairman, just ask, is anybody here in opposition? That's what we find in our community. 99% of the people in the community are not in opposition. But let me assure you, that 1% is going to do more for you with minimal, 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 if any complaint from anybody. Strongly urge you to consider it. The opportunities to expand what you even have here now is endless. And since this community takes a piece, a lot of money to put into non-media assets, I mean, that's a decision you guys handle and I'm just delighted they don't do that in Bedford. If that's more money in your pocket, that certainly, if that's what you're doing, to offset the tax rate, but at the same time, will also protect you. As I said, we did it as a defensive budget so when that money starts to slide down. So that's all I have to say. I mean, I hope you consider it. This comes from 22 years' worth of experience in dealing with councils over the years that did push back and just had me do some digging and more justification. So I don't mean to be coming into your community as an outsider, but I'm pretty passionate about it, that's why I love what I do. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone from Nashua here who would like to speak? All right. I do want to just observe that in addition to the fact that most of our franchise fee actually goes to the city budget as opposed to the PEG services, a number of those things that were cited as being possible expansions are things we're actually already doing with the current funding. All right. I guess if there are no further comments from members of the public, I see Mr. Preventure, are you?
I'm still here, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, did you have comments that you would like to make?
Nothing really in addition to what either I or any of us has said at this point.
My apologies, I, with your screen going to your name as opposed to your face, I thought you were another person calling in. All right, if there are no other comments, I guess, is there a final motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, members of the public, for your comments and we'll look forward to continuing the process. Thank you.